All right, we are back from our lunch break. And we ended with administrative office. So I'm going to ask the board, is there any other department that you'd like to look at, go through, question, have questions on?
If I could ask two.
Ms. Hawkins wanted to discuss, I had mentioned it in a couple of budgets about equity for unrepresented. She has a complete list. To be clear, these funds are already factored into this budget, but they will be coming to the board for requested approval on the 26th as well. So we wanted to talk about what those are.
Right. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director, I won't go through the entire list, a lot of the list that will be coming back to you, there's a lot of transfers in the list, just interdepartment transfers of the employees. But one of the things that I do want to make sure and bring to your attention today is that, just like we did with the, all of the bargaining unions last year, we did a review of the salaries of the unrepresented employees. And we used the same model for the unrepresented. We took those salaries that were 15 percent or higher and then applied an equity increase to them. I talked to the department heads, some of the positions, there were reasons that they don't have the full duties, things like that, and we're going to readdress them at final or we're also, or at midyear. HHSA, we're doing kind of a review of how their structure is for their top management. And so we'll be bringing that back at another time. But for our unrepresented employees, we, Human Resources had recommended that we give a 5 percent increase for the Assistant Chief Probation Officer, and that one was specifically talked about in his presentation. The Deputy Ag Commissioner, that position is underfilled right now, and so that would not be an increase to the budget because it is underfilled. The Principal Analyst is vacant, and so there would not be a change to that position or to the budget at this time. Senior Code Enforcement Officer, and it is also included in their budget. Ag Commissioner is, is a position that-
On the ones that are filled, would you mind saying, do you have the dollar impact on there, just so, or at least what the percentage changes? I think that would be helpful. Sorry to interrupt.
And while CAO Lutz interrupted, you may, I interrupt, could you explain the unrepresented classification for our folks?
Okay, so our unrepresented group is the, and we did not include at this time elected officials. This just includes, so supervisors, so our supervisors, managers, and then those in are considered confidential are in this group. So let me go through, and I don't-
Could you explain that when you say supervisors, you're not talking about us?
Right. So we're talking about department supervisors and not district supervisors.
Thank you.
So, I do not have the, the total, the total amount to the budget, even though I did calculate that out, I don't have it in front of me. So I can bring that back to you.
Well, and I think if we could at least have it to illustrate it for when the board considers those recommendations for the adopted in the 26th would be helpful, just so-
Yes, I will definitely-
The board can see what those percent changes are. Apologize, I should have mentioned that earlier, I didn't know that you wouldn't have it.
So, so the positions that we are giving the 5 percent is Business Analyst III, Network Specialist Manager, Senior Administrative Analyst, which is a vacant position, and Supervising Deputy Probation Officer. And the Assistant Probation Officer and Supervising Deputy Probation Officer, those positions were extremely impacted by the CCPSEA union increases that we gave. We are giving a 4 percent increase to the Facility Grounds Manager and the Road Superintendent. These are the increases for the July 1st. We will give an additional 5 percent increase in January of 2019. This follows the, what we did for all of the bargaining units, and that would be an additional 5 percent for the Ag Commissioner, Assistant Chief Probation Officer, Senior Code Enforcement Officer, the Ag Commissioner, Business Analyst III, and the Supervising Deputy Probation Officer. And then an additional 4 percent for the Facilities Grounds Manager and the Road Superintendent.
And we have a total for all of that?
And I do have a total for all that, that I can bring back to you, I just don't have it in front of me at this moment.
Can you bring that total to us on the 26th?
Yes.
Okay, make sure you have it on the 26th.
Yes.
Okay?
And I had provided that information to the admin office, I just don't have it in front of me right now.
So, just so I'm clear, so there's a July and then a January bump.
Right, it's broken out-
So we're looking at between 9 and 10 percent on these positions in aggregate?
Yes, 8 and 10 percent.
That's why I wanted to see the total.
One of them is five, actually it's between 5 and 10 percent. There are, the Deputy Ag Commissioner is only getting a total of 5 percent, along with the Principal Analyst and the Senior Administrative Analyst. Those are just 5 percent.
And these positions, some of these positions are just recently filled.
Well, those three that I just mentioned are vacant.
The what positions?
So, which, supervisor, to finish off on all these points, which positions are vacant?
And so the Deputy Ag Commissioner is vacant. We have somebody underfilling the position, so they would not get an increase. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The purpose of bringing this forward now is so that when those positions come up to be filled, or that classification stays in line, so that we've applied the, the correct equity increases to those positions.
And the ones that were just filled, I mean, that have been filled in the last couple of years, I mean, these are, it's not like they've been sitting there languishing, these are jobs that people applied for, they knew the salary, and they just took it. So I'm always hesitant, you know, if somebody just took a job, to turn around and give them a raise.
But it's also, speaks to retention.
But they just took the jobs.
And, you know, we're talking about a job market that is, you know, getting very difficult for the employer. Employees can go anywhere right now.
I understand the job market.
Can I add two things?
I'm not saying no, I'm just saying-
Right.
It raises a flag when we're requesting someone just took a job.
I have your numbers up here, if you wanted to see what the impacts are. Let me unfreeze this, so it's not stained. So, again, I've blacked out names, just because I don't want to talk employee names. You can see the first one, Facilities and Grounds Manager, the difference is $5,000. The Ag Commissioner, that difference almost are $12,689. The Ag Biologist III is $4,000. Vacant Deputy Ag Commissioner, again, as Judy said, that's underfilled, but should somebody be in that position, $3504. The Business Analyst III, $7287, that's the second Business Analyst III. A Network Manager for $6261. HHSA is an Admin Compliance Analyst.
Those have been taken off the list at this time.
Those have been taken off the list, okay. Then that's the County Veteran Services Officers, that they're not anymore.
Right, they're not, they're being reviewed at final.
Building Code Enforcement, Senior Code Enforcement, $14,000. Supervising Deputy Probation Officer, $14,700. Assistant Chief Probation Officer, $18,000. And then Public Works, Road Superintendent at $6,000. Total is $121,000. If I could add my, my other comment to this, to, in terms of why I felt this was an important direction forward, one, this is consistent with how we treated our represented units when we, when we went through negotiation to identify who was the farthest out. If I recall correctly, Judy, we had our Ag Commissioner that was-
The furthest out.
30 percent out.
A little bit more than that.
The, the issue obviously is about, yeah, people took the job that they're in to get that pay, but at the same time, we want to remain competitive. And quite honestly, there's been some question, and I think correctly so, from our unrepresented classifications of, is the only way to get a salary increase or an equity increase to be represented? So either we, you know, address what the needs are across the board, or we do it in bargaining, which is going to cost us a lot more time and money.
Correct. And because we have pulled several of those positions out, and looking at them later, either at final or midyear, it's not the full 121.
Can you go back over, just straight across from?
Do you need me to scroll up or stay where I'm at?
Stay where you're at.
And so in looking at, so Row E is basically the, what the rate is per hour after their COLAs, at the 2 percent COLAs that we're receiving.
I'm looking at Line P, which is what the increase will bring them to, is that correct?
Yes.
Or Line O is what the increase will bring them to?
And obviously that includes PERS, health benefits, all of those things. Your, Line G is your base salary.
Yeah, but I'm looking, because O is larger than P.
Right, so O is the, what it is bringing them to, P is what the, their current rate was forecasted to be, and then we get the difference.
So scroll up. Go.
Sorry. If Judy's saying things aren't relevant, I will-
Yeah, okay, if they're not relevant, let's-
That's all.
Okay, hold on. What was, I can't see the cameras in the way, Manager. Network Manager, what is that?
So the Network Specialist Manager is in our IT department, and that's who manages all of our, our network specialists.
Business Analyst?
And our Business Analyst is Barbara Biddick, sorry.
Those are the people who support our, are basically all of our applications there. You know, IT unfortunately has a lot of different names, Application Support Specialist, those are the people that basically keep all of our databases running and-
These are extremely highly skilled positions, when you're talking about the Business Analyst. The Network, the Network Manager, our Supervising DPOs, these are all positions that are very difficult to fill, and definitely we need to look at the equity.
I agree, we need to take a hard look at this. This is a, this is a multi-pronged issue that we need to discuss. I don't know, I would like to have this out as a separate agenda item, because putting it at the end of Day 3 is a lot to stomach.
Well, they were also included in their budgets.
I would like to delay this at least until Final Budget. And maybe revisit it at Final Budget when we have more solid numbers to deal with as far as what we're going to have. When we close our books and state finalizes their budget, and we go forward, so that's my opinion right now. Need to revisit it in September. I don't know, Supervisor Olivera?
I would agree. Let's take a look at it before Final Budget, and make sure we have all accurate information with the rest of the budget items.
Supervisor Guaramendi?
I concur.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, that's fine.
Supervisor Clapp here, so we have five going forward.
We should catch some salary savings then.
Any other department that we reached to visit? CAO, is there anything else you want to bring up?
That was it.
We'll poll the board.
I'd like to, to talk about code enforcement, or at least the, the land use issues, that was, there's going to be a lot of that coming on pretty soon. And I'd like to see how that goes, maybe at midterm, maybe we can hire more if that's working out well. Because I'd rather do most of the radications in code as a land use issue and not as a criminal issue. I just, I just, I'm more comfortable, and plus, if we do it through code enforcement, it's basically, we probably keep that, we cover some of the funds a lot easier, it'll be 20 days, we can have it from the citation to the administrative hearings. It would just be much more efficient for us to do it that way. And I'd like to keep that, maybe, if that starts going off working right, I'd like to look at midterm, maybe adding two positions on that. Because I think that's the most feasible way to do it, because we can have them, I believe they're entitled to administrative costs and eradication costs, but not fines. Fines would have to go to be adjudicated and stuff. And so they could actually put that on the property tax, they could take that out of TETER fund and keep on operating, and then we can get the TETER fund repaid back with the interest on the property tax. And I would like to see us move in that direction.
Supervisor Mills, any, I think what we need to do is take a poll, though, before we go forward, on the remaining items on the budget for the departments, as we approve the CAO's request for the remaining items. Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, I know there's going to be work to do between now and Final Budget, and some negotiations I'm certain will happen as a result of that, so, yes.
Supervisor Olivera?
I concur with Supervisor Mills.
Supervisor Guaramendi?
Yes.
And I would agree. So, is there any other comments?
I was going to ask if, I thank you for all the instructions, this is helpful, will, I was already on a conference call just before this to get everything set up for getting that information put into the document for the 26th, and should have that out Thursday morning at this point. The only question that I might have then is from now until Final Budget, do, you know, my goal would be to work with departments on, you know, basically what their overall expenditures were, I don't know if the board wants to provide any additional direction at this point, or what they might want to see come back at final.
Well, I had a conversation with you, I don't know how the board feels about it, but we've just pretty much agreed with the CAO with a few minor discrepancies on his I see, and I want to say that, first off, I did send an email to Rebecca Callen. I asked Rebecca Callen for her comments on this budget, and whether she agreed with this budget as proposed by the CAO or not. And she sent back an email responding, saying that she did agree with this budget, however she does recognize that we will have some issues to face next year by adopting this budget. She didn't go into elaborations on it, but I think we look at this budget, and we know there's a structural deficit here. And the amount of income that we will have or projected next year, going into next year's budget, we do not know. We don't know if the economy's going to bust in the middle of next year, we don't know what's in the forecast, none of us have a crystal ball going forward. So I did ask if there could be a possibility, and I asked the board if they would be interested in the possibility of when we go to Final Budget, between now and Final Budget, if there would be some type of proposal that could be brought by, for us to consider at that time, brought to us by the CAO, that would have a 5 percent reduction in the current budget that we just went through. And his explanation, at least presented to us, we don't have to accept it, but we can look at it and go through it at Final Budget time, in order to reduce some of the impacts going into next year. How we can get to that, I don't know, I'm leaving it up to him and the department heads in their discussions. But I thought I would throw it out there, and see if there's an interest by the board to at least have that work done and presented to us, whether we go down that route at Final Budget or not.
Can I start?
Any comments?
Yeah, I believe that there's $9 million being used, that's what I have next year. I can see us generating $3 million in property tax, sales tax, and different revenues coming in. And so that still leaves us next year with a $6 million hole that somehow we're going to have to fill. If we can go ahead and not do that, put ourselves in that position next year, and use part of that money next year, I can see us, the third year, having enough generated income from the increases that we can survive. But as it looks right now is, I don't see how we're going to fill the gap next year, I really don't. If, you know, without, with a 5 percent, I think would be a huge help.
Supervisor Mills?
I'm looking at, the number of staff positions that we're increasing is roughly a 4 percent increase over what we have now. And if we have excess money, is it better to be used for an increase in staff and growing the size of government, or is it better used in assets and creating efficiencies around those assets? I look at, for instance, the amount of give back that was in the payroll last year as being substantial, it was what, 2.1 million at midyear, and the sheriff admitted 860,000 give back at the end of the year for his department alone. So I don't see all of those positions as being filled, but that does create a problem for us in the out-years. And we, we may not have to deal with it in this budget, but subsequent budgets will. So it will be the option of, you're going to add in this staff, but then you're going to be looking at, what do you do going down the road? Because these are not assets, these don't have a fixed value, they're going to continue to draw. So I'm concerned about the out-years here. I would like to try to do what we can to stay within that 3 percent Consumer Price Index or the GDP, in other words, look at what is our projected growth rate, so that if we're going to add money into the budget, we're going to be able to sustain it through the growth rates that will be coming in future years. So that is the greatest concern. If we're saying 5 percent, this, this budget, according to what it's saying here, has an overall increase in expenses of 3.69 percent. So does that mean that we really have to see about a 3 percent instead of a 3.69? Not really, not when you're saying you plugged in nine more million dollars to make it happen. So it's somewhere, we've got to find a balance as a board, as to what we're willing to accept, and not create a poison pill for the future. And that, that is the greatest concern. So I would like to see what we can do to bring this from what it is. And I got to tell you, this is, I've seen a lot of budgets, Mr. Lutz, and this is oppressive, what you've put together. But it's, it's a starting point, and it's going to be a work in progress, and we understand that. I would like to say, let's try to see what we can find between now and the final, and bring something back to the board as some options that we might be able to look at. Maybe we, we don't go after all of this as aggressively as we have. And, and realize that some of this may have to be put into a, a year over year, rather than just try to get it all done in one year, and then create a problem for, for the future. So that would be my request, is to find a way to get this more in line with our, our potential growth into the future, so that we are not experiencing situations that are not recoverable in the future as well.
Supervisor Olivera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree that we need to very cautiously and realistically take a look at what's going to happen next year, for the next three to five years. But a priority that we must, must maintain, is to arrive at that without laying our employees off. And I know that that's going to be a very hard decision, it really is. And my priority would, would be to, number one, provide the services we can, and keep our staff employed. I've seen cut, cut, cut over the last five to 10 years, and now we, we only have a short period of time to make up for it. So we have to be wise in what we do with this budget. I think the scenario of a 5 percent gives us choices, what we can do, but we have to keep our priorities in line. We've got to keep the county running, we've got to provide the safety of our public safety, we've got to provide the services this county needs, and the utilities that this county survives on. But not the risk of our employees, not the risk of hiring people, giving them a raise and then laying them off. That happens too often around here. If we're going to change, let's change everything, for the better of the county and its people. Thank you.
Supervisor Guaramendi?
As I was telling the Chair earlier today, if you go to the casino and you win $25,000, you put a new roof on your house, you don't count it as income and go get a new mortgage. And I worry that in many ways, that's what we've done, and on Tuesday afternoon, we talked about this exact issue, we talked about the structural deficit, we talked about that we wanted to try to smooth out the cliff, yet over the course of the last two and a half days, we cut net about $1,000 off of the, the overall deficit. So, you know, I hate having to have the department heads come and sing for their supper, us give it, and then we're going to turn around and say, oh, but what we really meant was, we want 5 percent. I don't think we have a choice. I mean, I think the only responsible thing we could do is begin to squeeze to get our revenues and our expenditures in line with our revenues, for all the reasons that were pointed out here. You know, I think I pointed out a couple times this day, we're going, we just approved these positions, and now we're either not going to fill them, or we're going to cut them. And so I feel bad for the folks that came and sang for their supper, and I think we could have, we could have helped solve this problem, but, you know, we're punting to the CAO, who's going to have to make, who's going to have to squeeze. And, you know, granted, that's CAO's job often, but I think we could have helped. But overall, this budget, you know, you did what your board asked you to do, and I think you delivered on that. But I do think, I would agree with the Chair, that I would like to see 5 percent in, in September, so we begin to get closer in line, because next year at this time, we're going to have horrible conversations with people. And, and I'd like to smooth that out, and I really worry about some of our, some of the stuff we've approved today. But, you know, we did what we did as a board, and we'll, we'll work through it, we have to, that's all.
Yeah, I think what would happen was, he could bring it to us for, for us to review and go through and scrutinize it, and either agree with it or pick and choose or whatever, but through it. But I think at least have it option for us to look at when we go into Final Budget, and whether we agree all, or get three votes, or four votes, or five votes for it at that time or not, at least it's out there as an option to us. So, we all agree on that, to at least bring it forward.
5 percent?
5 percent.
I would agree. But we got a starting-
Let's look at 5 percent.
Let's look at 5 percent, and if we, we can go through it at the time-
Yeah.
-when he proposes it to us.
This is a starting point. This is a starting point. Work from here. Let's try to spread this out, spread it into the out-years as best we can. I'd like to bring one other point up about jobs because of the number of people I've hired and had in my career, is if someone is going to come looking to Calaveras County or looking for a job, there are certain criteria that those potential employees are going to look at. And I know Ms. Hawkins can probably agree that one of the first things that I look at is turnover. What is the turnover within the organization? Because that's going to tell me the likelihood that I'll stay there. Number two is the stability of the entity. If there's no financial stability, if there's no stability within the organization, is that a place you really want to go work? So you're going to try to find the most stable place to work. And then the third thing is the work environment itself. Those are the three key factors that bring people in. It isn't money. I had people that worked for me year over year over year and top performers and never got a raise, and they stayed on. And they stayed on because they liked their work environment. They liked where they were. There was low turnover, and it was a family. I would like to get Calaveras County as employees to become a family again. And I think that's a key component to whether or not we're going to attract new employees who want to come here and be a part of that family.
Any other board comments or any staff comments? If not, give direction on how we'll close the budget hearings. And then we will go into our regular agenda. And I believe what's left on the regular agenda is board announcements.
Public comment.
Well, public comment will come after announcements.
Supervisor announcements. In compliance with A B. 1234, chaptered as Government Code Section 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, such as mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also, at the board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
Board announcements. Supervisor Clapp?
I attended Good Morning Calaveras and my C S A. 1, Rogue Department, I attended that, and Area 12 was canceled this month.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, I attended a very challenging meeting in Mariposa as a year, required yearly face-to-face meeting in Mariposa, the Calaveras-Mariposa Community Action Agency. And in that run, I gained a new appreciation for how well our county has recovered from the spring of 2017 storms. Highway 49 is still closed during, due to washouts, and most major roads in Mariposa County are either closed through traffic or in repairs. So this turned a 70-minute trip into over two hours one way winding through construction areas. So surprise, half my day was spent driving. June 6th to 8th, the request of Mountain County's Water Resource Association, I accompanied the agency members to a north-meets-south tour this past week in Costa Mesa. The Southern California Host provided a tour of their facilities, including the Metropolitan Water District's Dymir Facility, which is the second-largest treatment plant in the United States, Urban Ranch-Michelson Facility, Mesa Water District Facility, Orange County Water Replenishment System, and San Diego's Desalination Plant. The event included open discussions with Southern California water agencies intended to bring water partnerships and finding common interests, understanding differences, and dispelling myths. With my involvement in water issues throughout Sierra Nevada and San Joaquin Basin, M C W R A. appreciated the perspective from a source county in bringing, helping to bring a better dialogue to those who use water in Southern California. I was able to see firsthand the efforts being undertaken in Southern California to protect their water basins from salt intrusion, to recycle literally millions of gallons of wastewater every day into safe drinking water, and to recharge their groundwater basins for drought resiliency and to convert ocean water into potable water. During that visit, I was able to have a personal conversation with Jeffrey Nightlinger, the General Manager of Metropolitan Water District, and Devin Updike, Metropolitan Water Resource Group Manager, in bringing the message to how the source counties can work together with those in the South to ensure safe, resilient water supplies throughout the state. I also like to report out that Caltrans has sent me a letter in response to my request regarding the barriers along Utica Grade and that they are going to be starting that field investigation, and they should have that complete within four to six months, and then they'll notify us of the results. So they feel that there is something there, and so they're going to be looking at it.
Thank you. Supervisor Olivera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 6th, on Wednesday, I attended the Ebbets Pass Property Owners Committee meeting at, at Ebbots was it, normally rated 2. And we just, sorry. Couldn't see the red light. On the 6th, I attended the Eppock meeting in Arnold at the Ebbets Pass Fire Department, and that's basically a meeting of all the homeowners associations along the Highway 4 corridor. Those issues discussed were an actual reporting out on a monthly basis from public safety, any type of problems in the community that is addressed on homeowners. More importantly, that we discussed the possibility of modifying or eliminating, if you will, plan development on the Highway 4 corridor from Avery up to Arnold into Dorington. There is a community effort. We've had two meetings already. Alicia Mutteries, our Planning Commissioner for District 3, actually held a meeting yesterday. I was unable to attend because I was here. But we find that very constructive, and they're putting together a grassroots committee to look at this on a community level. We looked at the success in Moke Hill, that they did eliminate plan development, but things have changed. The plan development came into the Arnold area about 1998, and it was a different world then. We're looking at today's world and in the future, and that's an issue that we're going to take on a community level. And then we'll bring that, that result to the county and go from there. We're actually working with Peter Muir-Mauer of our Planning Department. On that evening, I attended the COG meeting. I'm on the alternate on that, and I believe I took your place, Mr. Mills. Yeah, I'm not going to let him tell you what, how come he wasn't there, but the bottom line, I don't know. But it was a pretty good meeting. We had a pretty good time. We did, we did solve some issues that were in the course of business, but nothing really earth-shattering was decided, so we get to go back into that, Dennis.
They're going to stall me.
We attended the Tot, the, I'm sorry, Transit Occupancy Tax Committee meeting, work group meeting on the next day, the 7th. That meeting, we did discuss the future of what we're going to do as far as promoting this. We have not brought this to the Board of Supervisors yet. The committee meeting is in progress, and we are progressing as we thought, as far as getting the information out and how we're going to present it. There was a survey conducted, and I don't have the results of that survey. That was going to be, I believe, four days long, Mr. Lutz. I don't know if you have information on that.
I do have information on that, and the 26th is going to be a full presentation on the results, which I will just add to this point, we're positive.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, sir. Monday, I did attend the first meeting of the Forest Health and Management, actually Forest Management and Health statewide committee that was recently formed as a result of tree mortality and other issues. I've come back from that meeting with some question marks as far as what the future and the involvement of local county government is going to be. We had approximately 18 agencies and representatives on the tree mortality Governor's Task Force. This new committee involves 33 agencies. Unfortunately, at this time, none of the counties have a seat at that table. There is a work group on tree mortality that's going to be advisory, from what I understand and what the information provided to us on Monday, to be advisory to that Forest Health and Management. This is still in development, and they're seeking some feedback from the counties. Nothing's set in stone other than the fact that it's here, it's official, and it's been, it's actually been ordered by the judge, by, by the judge, by the governor through executive order. So we're going to, we're going to find out what's going to become of that and what that program entails. I'd like to thank Michelle Patterson for keeping above, keeping us on top of that, and she did attend in a conference call. And we'll be working together to find out our next move and how we're going to be represented. That's about it, folks.
Thank you. Supervisor Garamendi?
There's a lot of good stuff happening in District 2 right now. Things are moving forward, but out of respect for A B. 1234, and having to report out on meetings that I paid to go to, or was paid to go to, I have nothing to report, and I will surrender my time to you in the interest of getting through these last three days.
And I did not, I attended several meetings, but none that I took any compensation for. So I have nothing to report this time in the interest of time, Supervisor Garamendi. So I will turn it over to the C A O. Do you have anything to report, County Council? Madam? No. Oh.
Chair, I do have something. Considering the county's situation right now with what I call is a very divisive nature, I know that in the past supervisors have asked to bring something to the voters. And I would like to poll the board as to whether or not they would like to see an advisory measure come before the voters for the purpose of determining whether or not the ban ordinance that is in place right now is what this county really wants. And to instruct staff to prepare that for the ballot in November.
I will say this, that I have been working with County Council on this issue. They have sent me some emails over the course of the last couple of days I have not seen yet, but it goes back to when we were going to put this issue back in January or February, and we voted not to do it. I asked for all of that information. I haven't had a chance to go through it. But if you're asking for a poll of the board right now, I guess we could do that. And you're asking whether the board wants to move forward with putting an initiative on to-
November's ballot.
-the November ballot.
For the purpose of answering the question.
As far as answering questions?
No, as far as an advisory vote.
An advisory vote?
Right.
So I will go forward and ask Supervisor Clapp?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to need some clarification on an advisory vote status. What, what does that entail? What does that hold as far as what the board can and cannot do for an advisory vote on a ballot? County Council, can you provide information on that?
Certainly, the board can direct staff to bring anything. I would caution the board from getting into much detail today since it is not agendized. So if this is something that the board wishes to see, you can certainly direct staff to bring an item back as soon as possible. As Chair Taffanelli indicated, this item was in front of this board in February, so, and the intent of that item was for the June ballot, which, as you know, the board did not place, place anything on that ballot. So if this board directs staff to bring that forward, our office would certainly work with the elections official to bring an item similar to the one in February back for the board's consideration.
That, thank you for that information. But what exactly, how effective is an advisory status is what I'm getting at? What action can be taken or can any action be taken on advisory vote?
Again, just, an advisory is just, is just that. It's the voters telling the elected officials what it is that they would like to see generally. I would rather, I'm getting a little uncomfortable as far as how substantive this discussion is since it's not on today's agenda. So all of those things would be laid out, and whatever item comes back for the board for full discussion, that would be included in that full discussion for the board to consider.
Why don't I say this? Back in February, I know that there was three items that were brought for our attention to put on the ballot. One was a complete ban, was regulatory, and one was the questions that we're asking about here. So why don't we take a poll on whether we want to bring, how the staff bring back that information to us that was brought to us in February for our considerations?
Can we have some discussion on that?
Sure.
You know, I get it. This is an election year. I do not think putting something on the ballot is going to reach your goal, Dennis, of uniting. I think it's devising. I think it's a superb political tactic to motivate people to come to the vote from certain bases. But let's just be honest, I sat up here with you guys for 18 months fighting about cannabis. If suddenly the population came out and said, yes, we want it, I'm frankly not sure that either of you would change your position on that. You have been very hard in your position and consistent.
Chair Taffanelli, I apologize for interrupting, but this is, is-
I'm getting to the point on the poll.
Right, I know, but as far as the discussion, that's where I'm trying to get to the-
Well, let me finish my point, and that is, therefore, I think a poll, an advisory initiative would be a big distraction and a waste of county resources, and I will not support it.
Okay. Supervisor Olivera?
And I, and I don't want to try counsel's patience here. I know we're walking a thin line. I would, I would be supportive of that because I've tried that four times before this very board to get it to the vote of the people. But I have questions on being advisory. I would like to see it have substantiated effects and remove advisor and just put it on the ballot. That's my personal feelings, and that's the way I think we should do it. But I would support the request because all along, I believe the people ought to have the opportunity to vote on this.
So you're supporting bringing back the options that County Council put together as the Chair put forth?
For review, for review, but not, not dead set for those. I think we're getting into that area, right, Counsel?
The item that was brought back in February was brought by the elections official. So the direction that we're looking for from this board is whether you would like to direct staff to bring an item back for your consideration. I highly encourage you to not get into substantive discussion about that item specifically. All of those substantive discussions can be held when the item is brought back before you and properly agendized.
And Chair, to that point, that the board may in that discussion decide that it not be an advisory vote, that it be a binding vote, and that will be for us to talk about at that time. And that's all I'm asking.
I would agree with that.
Supervisor Clapp?
I would go with, I'd like to just see the ban that we passed go to the ballot. They give it up or down, but I agree with Megan, just bring all three back. We'll have the discussion at that point.
We concur. Supervisor Garamendi, you agree with that?
No, I do not.
You're not? So we have four, one. So staff, do you want to bring it back?
I will certainly relay the information to the elections official, and my office will work with that office in doing so, and we will bring it back to you as soon as possible.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it?
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to public comment period, and I'll remind the public that this is a continuation from Tuesday's meeting. So if you spoke at public comments on Tuesday, you've already had your say. It would be somebody that did not speak at public comments.
Mr. Chair, could I ask that we take a break for five minutes?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, now we're live. Okay.
I want to congratulate Supervisor Mills for writing Silent Poison. My understanding is it's being used nationally and statewide on a number of issues to show that legal reference to it. And so congratulations on that. issues to show that legal reference to it, and so, congratulations on that, and Supervisor Clapp and Toffenelli and Mills have been my heroes because they have supported our national government in that marijuana is illegal and a schedule one drug, and they have done their best, and I really appreciate it, what they've done to support what our country's laws are. And, um, the, I think it was yesterday, I was driving into the parking lot down at Valley Springs, and, um, I got out and I was going to go do something, and, and there was this man, and he had this huge grin on his face, and he was kind of laughing, and I go, "Hey, what are you laughing about?" And he said, "Well, I have this friend, and he, uh, he's got a lot of problems. He can't pay his employees. He's got the money to pay his employees, but he can't pay his employees, and he's got money to do this and that and the other thing, but he can't do it. He can't even bank his money because, uh, he had this vault built here in Calaveras County, and, um, and so, he's growing marijuana in it, and, um, and now he's got a whole bunch of money from it, but he can't, he doesn't know how to use it. He can't pay his employees. He's really in a hard spot." And, um, I said, "Well, I don't agree with, uh, the marijuana issue," and, and he's all, "Well, I don't either." So, that was just an example of something. Another thing, I was talking to a young man, and, uh, I was talking about how a lot of the pot people say that if people, you know, have pot to look forward to coming home, they don't come home angry because they have the pot to look forward to, and, um, and he said, um, let's see, I, he says, "Yeah, then they come to work angry." So, in other words, they're coming to work angry, but they're happy when they're home. Um, the workplace is now an acceptable place to be either coming off drugs or actually on drugs. Is it, is it acceptable for an airplane pilot?
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments? Hello.
My name's Katinka McEwen, District Two, business owner, farmer, mother of two. It's another depressing day here in Calaveras County. The Butte fire took our home, all of our family heirlooms, and burnt all of our land. Contrary to a recent article, there are still families like ours that live in campers and continue to struggle for moderate restitution from PG&E's proven negligence. We invested our savings to rebuild our farm so it would comply with the U.O. regulations post-fire because we were told that our participation would be the precursor to permanent regulation. This was the bait. Failure to do so would have resulted in our names being placed on a list that would have precluded us from applying for a state license. This was the large stick. Where is this list of illegal growers that will never be allowed to apply for a cultivation license? Where is it? There isn't one, is there? The three good old boys sitting there so high and mighty on your horses, Toffenelli, Mills, Clapp, choosing to persecute those of us that complied and followed the law, too scared to direct the sheriff to go after those who haven't. We paid all the Measure C taxes that were overwhelmingly approved by sixty-seven-point-one percent of this county's voters. The cannabis farmers of Calaveras County and the revenue created by our sixteen-point-eight million dollars in taxes and fees have kept this county from defaulting on its obligations and out of bankruptcy. The three meek and morally corrupt men on this board chose to accept these funds instead of enacting their ban when they came into office with full knowledge that failure to do so would have left them with an insurmountable deficit. The choice to change the scope of the EIR was politically motivated and not grounded by scientifically-based facts or the reality that one-hundred percent compliance with a ban is a farce, a farce. This was the switch. The public was force-fed a bunch of lies concocted by political operatives and admitted into evidence by a dishonest supervisor, Mills. After the EIR comment period, it made no distinction between the illegals that operated however they wanted, flaunting all of their rules without consequence, and those of us that were adhering to environmental regulations and paying taxes. As difficult as our life has been to hold together since the fire, it's the three of you men that have dealt the final death blow to our family's livelihood. You're taking the food right out of our children's mouths and destroying a burgeoning industry that could benefit the county in a myriad of ways, from public safety to education. You failed to provide legal agricultural farmers with reasonable, workable regulation. Bait and switch will be your legacy. The three of you will be voted out of office. The farmers and families of Calaveras County just might be able to recover from the damage inflicted by your shortsighted and corrupt actions. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I read the article that she's talked, just talked about in the paper this morning. It's my understanding that the urgency ordinance was only a temporary ordinance. It was nothing meant to be permanent. As a signature gatherer in both representing the ban and the people's initiative and on the recall of Garamendi, I learned many things from many people with many sides and many views. I had multiple young people talk to me about how much money they had invested in their farms. What was really amazing to me is these people all had the same story. They put everything they had into it. I told them, "I'm sorry, that happened to you. The emergency ordinance was never meant to be permanent. It was a temporary ordinance in twenty-sixteen by a then-board." Mr. Olivera was the only one that said, "No." The other four said, "Yes." So, it moved forward. My story for the young people that I've talked to, that I've told them, I had two baskets full of eggs. I wanted to buy a house. I wanted to be below what rent was costing me. I went to a financial advisor, I talked to them. They told me what I needed to do to get where I'm at. I went to a taxman, I talked to them. They told me what I needed to do to get where I am. I did that, and I still have a basket full of eggs. I didn't sink everything I had into one project like so many young people do today, and that's where I don't understand. They put everything into it and left nothing in reserve. You guys came up with a budget that did have some reserves. You had to work at it, and you're willing to work at this budget. I have to work at mine all the time. I don't have added income. I don't want to go back to work full-time. I'm seventy-seven years old. If I don't get a raise from social security, I don't get money. That's the way it is, but I do pay extra money out of my social security for the taxes. I do make my mortgage payment, and I still have a basket full of eggs, and that's what these people need to realize, too. They need to learn how to budget their monies and tighten their belts, just like a lot of people in my age group do, and from what I see and heard today on the budgets and the hearings, I think you all can tighten your belts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comments.
There's a cut water. Been waiting three days for this. Jason Campbell, District Five. My middle name is, "I'm not Big Pot." I have two kids, a wife who's Citizen of the Year, Valley Springs. Um, I'd like to talk about transparency and honesty today. Supervisor Toffenelli, I'd like to thank you for finally ruling on my point of order. I was able to watch the meeting from yesterday. Thank you for finally ruling on my point of order first thing in the morning. I would still greatly appreciate an explanation as to why you singled me out and selectively enforced me on that point of order, and now it's okay to display these signs in the back of the room. Um, I don't think that was right. I still don't think it's right. Supervisor Mills, uh, I think the public deserves an explanation of how you were able to fast-track your paving project, and how much did that cost the public? Supervisor Clapp, I think it's time that you realize, based on the last election cycle, over sixty percent of your district does not agree with you. You do not represent us. Honestly, I feel it's time you should resign. It's just sad times here. You guys talk about division constantly. Where do you think that division's coming from? You guys are making life a team sport out here. That's not what it is. We're all human beings. We are all citizens of Calaveras County. I understand that you all have your respected districts to supervise, but gentlemen, you need to understand that when you make decisions, they don't just affect your district, they affect the entire county. I think that's something you all need to think about. And Supervisor Mills, uh, you're so good at dropping these Silent Poison-esque last-minute items here that aren't even on the agenda. Now we're talking about putting something back on the ballot? Why are we playing this game with everybody's lives? If we were going to do that, why didn't we do it almost a year ago when we were talking about it? I don't understand what's going on here, guys. You made a decision to ban? Stick with it. Own it. Deal with it. Figure out how you're going to fund it, enforce it, and in closing, Administrator Lutz, I'd like to thank you for your work on the budget, but it's unacceptable. If you clearly look that the, uh, the Measure C and the deficit are very close to each other, there's no reason we have a nine-million-dollar budget deficit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Under the urgency ordinance, cultivators were required to pay a five-thousand-dollar annual registration fee to cover the costs of administering the program. So, to remain in compliance, the planning department required me to pay five thousand to renew my annual registration that would have expired on May twenty-second of this year. So, before the deadline, I walked up to the planning desk and I gave them five thousand bucks. After paying the fee, the planner returned with my renewed registration bearing an expiration date of June seventh. That expiration date was fifteen days after the effective date of my renewal. So, I pointed out to the planners, "As I understand it, this is an annual fee to fund a program for going forward for a year paid in advance," and I said it seemed appropriate to either charge me a prorated amount that reflected the fifteen-day period for which the registration was valid, or that I should receive a refund for the balance after the ban ordinance took effect, and I was told there would be no refunds. So, I went back and I looked, and at the January thirty-first-seventeen study session, County Council advised the board that if they instituted a ban ordinance, the remainder of the unspent portion of the registration fees would have to be reimbursed to the registrants who paid into that fund. Well, this board passed a ban earlier this year, then ended the U.O. and the registration program. Mr. Chair, I have two questions for staff and/or member of the board, whoever feels best qualified to answer, and they are as follows. One, given the definition of a fee under Prop twenty-six, what, if any, are the rationales, legal or ethical, for taking my entire five thousand for an annual registration fee to fund a program that was only going to last for fifteen days? That's one. Number two, why hasn't the Nexus Study of the Registration Fee Program the county was required to conduct been made available for public review? If I could get any answers to that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I will close public comments, and we stand adjourned until next Tuesday.